...
I see. I just put that on. Oh, my.
Oh, oh.
That's right, we're playing the program now? Yeah. Okay. It's not really like all this beautiful, like, kind of, it's just the same, it's back to the same thing.
I know, it is.
Yeah. So, yeah. It's all about the things. That's true. She's... It's not so... I'll find her. I'm worried about her. I can't... I can't...
Someday morning when it's like before. To follow our special show. I'll follow. I'll follow. For me, I'll follow. My way is long is here. I like how you're hard. I'll follow. When the shadow runs away from me. I'll follow. My love, your faith is far as home. I'll follow. Oh, oh, oh. I'll follow. And I'll be there for you. I'll follow.
I think we got... Come back for, uh, late sermons, community, the full version of them.
Certainly.
Dolores, Dolores played that on the organ, but there's just something about here that...
I, I swear, are you praying? Please say your prayer. Please say your prayer.
Yeah.
This is so funny.
Yeah. All right, good morning, good. First Sunday in November morning. Our memory verse for the month of November. "I will give thanks to you, Lord, with all my heart, and will tell of all your wonderful deeds." Psalm nine one. Let's say that together. "I will give thanks to you, Lord, with all my heart. I will tell of all your wonderful deeds." Psalm nine one. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks this day as we enter into this season of Thanksgiving, as we approach the day of Thanksgiving. May we always be reminded to give you thanks in the good times and the bad times for what you've done for us. Give you thanks for Jesus Christ our Lord. Give you thanks for this church. Be with us as we explore your word this morning in Christ's name. Amen. All right, so today is, uh, All Saints Day observance, so Jerusalem, my heavenly home, seven, or six seventy three.
Six seventy?
Si, yeah. Six hundred seventy three.
Oh, you get six seventy?
Your hair's getting long.
No.
Thanks, guys.
My, uh, hairdresser stopped hairdressing. Why's he back? I had one look around.
I did too early.
You're one of my favorite places. Good morning, folks.
Good morning.
The ones we replaced the bowls? We are in Acts, chapter eight. Somebody say "finally"?
I did.
Hey, we started last week, okay? So, just to recap, um, Christ ascends to heaven, Holy Spirit comes out, they preach in power, the gals are baptized. They keep on, uh, the apostles keep on going out and preaching, the, the church lives in harmony. There's some people that want the glory of the church, in other words, they would, they're basically stealing glory from God. Holy Spirit is acting in power, they drop dead. Apostles continue to preach, they come in conflict with the temple leaders. They're told not to preach in Christ's name, even though, um, and, and the response is, is hey, God has told us to keep on preaching in, in Christ's name. It had a message that night from, from the angels. Um, some division breaks out in the church because the widows of the hellinest are not being taken care of, so they appoint deacons. You have the first church, uh, voters meeting, basically. They pick seven men, which one is Stephen? And then they, uh, the apostles confirm that. Stephen, uh, is preaching. Uh, so somehow part of his, his deacon, diagonal office, he's, he's preaching. And he is accused of blaspheming Moses and God, he's prophetic for the Saint Hedren. Um, he clearly shows that he's not, but they stone him anyway. Uh, and they lay their garments at the feet of a gentleman named Saul. And Saul was ravaging the church, entering house after house, he dragged off men and women and committed them to prison. All right? So he somehow has the authority to arrest people. Now, obviously, they're not going to Roman prison. They're going to, um, the prison set up by the Jews to deal with eternal, internal matters, which is why they can't put them to death. Because that would need approval from the Romans. So the persecution that stones Stephen is the, kind of an aberration, basically you have a mob that breaks out before the Romans can break it up. They've, they've murdered Stephen and they stoned him. But by and large, the Romans did not approve of violent mob breaking out and stoning people. That's kind of bad governance to allow that to happen all the time, by the way. People start getting crazy ideas in their mind when you allow them to do that. So, verse four. Now, so chapter eight, verse four. "Now those who were scattered went about preaching the word. Philip went down to the city of Samaria, proclaimed to them the Christ, and the crowds with one accord paid attention to what was being said by Philip. When he, they heard him and saw the signs that he did for unclean spirits crying out with a loud voice, came out of many who had them, and many who were paralyzed were laid more healed. So there's much joy in that city." Um, I believe, I mentioned last week that this is the apostle Philip, not the deacon Philip. If I have my backs correct.
I think backwards.
Or did I have it backwards?
You're backwards.
This is deacon Philip. Okay.
Philip, you're testing me.
No, I'm not. I'm not.
We are awake.
It's just, I, I, you know, I addressed that last week and I didn't think of it until I was reading it this morning, uh, reviewing and saying, I forgot. Um, which one it was, so... There's too many Phillips, like, there's too many Marys. Right? Um, so... What had Jesus told them? You will be my witnesses in Jerusalem and Samaria and the ends of the earth. Right? So they've been witnessing in Jerusalem, right? The persecution happens. Now, I think one of the... Were, were the disciples, the apostles, the deacons, the disciples, were they being unfaithful by staying in Jerusalem and preaching? No, they, they weren't, right? I think something that people wrestle with is when God allows sin to happen to accomplish his means. Right? And what I mean by that is, is God scatters the church to go out by the persecution. Now, the apostles stay in Jerusalem at this point in time, the apostles stayed in Jerusalem. But the other members of the church go out. But yeah, so the apostle Philip would have stayed in the church. Right? So this is deacon, deacon Philip. Um... I have seen it preached and seen it taught that God brings persecution on the church because they're not going out and doing what they're supposed to be doing. Right? Um, and it, it makes me scratch my head, and I think it's, it's because people have to find an explanation for persecution to happen. There is this, there's always this self-righteous works righteous tug. And what I mean by that is, is there's always this idea that if I can live the faith perfectly, then good things will happen to me. And you see this on the individual level and you see this on, on a nationalistic level, right? The Pharisees were trying to get people to be faithful so good things would happen to Judea, to Israel.
Is that where it actually comes from, that, the root of all this? Because it's always, if you do this perfect, you, your life is gonna be perfect, everything's gonna be wonderful, and that is not...
I think that's the root of it, and I, and I, the thing about it is, is like, I believe every person is guilty of it. Including myself, right? And, you know, I'll joke in sermons, right? You're in a rush and you hit every red light and you go, why God? Right? What is that really reflective of? Right? What did I do wrong to bring punishment so I can fix it so I can hit all these green lights because I'm in a hurry now? Right?
Well, just back to the, the question of whose sin that this man should be burdened with.
Exactly.
Negative consequences come from negative actions, not from just a fall in normal.
And this is, this is the idea in Job's friends. Admit what sin you did so God will remove this punishment for you. And what was the punishment? He lost his kids and he lost his, um, all his earthly possessions and he lost his health. The only thing he didn't lose was
His life.
His life and his wife. Right? Which there's a comedian that has a great bit about that. Now, he went on to have more kids, so obviously that relationship was fantastic. But, uh, anyway, um...
Yeah, but even she was at one point having another...
Curse God and die, right? Right? You're still alive, curse God and die. So it's, it's... When we approach passages like this, like, what happened to Stephen? What did Stephen do wrong? Nothing. And, and so there, there, there's a double false belief here, by the way. One false belief is that if the church is not being persecuted, it is not preaching faithfully. And that's just not true. Right? Hard persecution doesn't exist always in the world. Persecution doesn't always exist in the world. Right? Soft persecution doesn't always exist in the world. And the other is, is that, um, if the church is being persecuted, it must be because it's not doing something right. And it's really funny, um, when you can find yourself or somebody else saying both of those ideas, but they're applying which one to different situations. For example, one that, that's, that's somewhat recent, right? The Christians in Africa are being persecuted because they're faithful. And you know that the church in America is unfaithful because we're not persecuted. Pick Elaine! Whoa. Excuse me, that was, that was the same thing.
No, but the church in America is being persecuted because we're not faithful enough. If we were faithful enough...
Yeah, excuse me, excuse me, yes, yes. The reason, the reason why society is de-Christianized is because we're not faithful enough and so we're being persecuted. That's what I meant to say.
It's kind of crazy because it's gonna be persecution because there's always evil in the world.
There will be persecution, and it will take different forms. Right? And sometimes it will be violent and not, and other times it won't be. But I'm, I'm just trying to say, like, what this really, what it boils down to, I'll get to your statement in a second. What this boils down, what this boils down to is trying to sit there and say, is God angry with me or not? And if he's angry with me, how do I fix it? And that, and that's works righteousness.
But on the other side, I've also heard the opposite side. If everything is just perfect and everything is going super, maybe the devil already has everything and he wants you to be.
Yeah.
And he's leaving you alone.
Yeah. And I've heard that too. And again, that's, that's you not being faithful enough.
That's right.
Right?
When it's there's along that same line, the more active we are, the more active the devil is. The devil works harder.
Yes. He does, he does. But we can't tie persecution or lack of persecution to individual or group fidelity. Because when we do that, it becomes all about the works, right? James is, James is talking to people who are trying to live the faith but aren't producing works. Right? So faith should produce works. He doesn't sit there and say, I'll show you my persecution. Right? God, so I just, I want to talk about this because they're, so God uses this persecution. He, he is setting this up for his plan because as, as Paul put out, the guy who is leading this persecution right now, arresting people, is going to write, "He is a stumbling block for Jews and folly for Gentiles." Because the world is divided upon Jesus Christ. And so God uses that to cause the spread, the spread of the proclamation of the resurrection of Jesus Christ. God, God's will is always accomplished. Sin cannot subvert God's will. We are not more powerful than God. Satan is not more powerful than God. God uses sinners to accomplish his will. Samson, David, Saul. Both Sauls, Old Testament and New Testament. Peter. God uses ordinary people and God uses great people, sinners, to accomplish his purpose. And so God, in his providence, allows sin, but he works it for good. So people are going to prison. And so Christians flee Jerusalem to avoid going to prison for their faith and thereby preach the word in new places, which makes more Christians. But again, this, this is, we, we we are so self-centered that when that, when it happens to us, we go, what did I do wrong? Why is God angry with me? How do I fix it? Because God is dependent upon me being perfect to give me good things. And it completely bypasses the cross and the need for Jesus Christ. And how does God deal with people? Through Jesus Christ. Those who reject Jesus are dealt with the judgment of Jesus. And those who know Jesus, who are baptized into the faith, who believe, are dealt with in the mercy of Jesus. It's the same event, just what side of the divider you want. It's the same flood. Are you in the ark or out of the ark? God's acts of mercy are also acts of judgment. And it depends on which side you're on. You're brought through the Red Sea or you're drowned in the Red Sea. It's the same event. Right?
I think we're good about making it about us until we don't want to. Because I was just thinking, the, the we're told by Christ that they will hate you in my name or for my sake. That, that we're gonna be, we're gonna face opposition because of our faith.
Yeah, I mean...
And a lot of people, but a lot of people are they get criticized for what they do and because they think they're doing it in Jesus's name, that it's because of Jesus, not because in the moment they're actually being jerks.
Yes.
And so, so it's not only the what can I do so that God loves me? It's, I'm doing this in God's name, therefore it must be right.
Yeah.
And it's not...
In my words, my tone, don't matter. Now, I, there is a time and a place to be a jerk. There is. There's, there's a season for everything. There's a time for war and there's a time for peace. There's a time and place to be a jerk. Right? When you meet people who are being jerks in the name of the Lord, read Luther's writings. Okay? There's a time and a place. But you need to really understand when that time and place is, and it's not 24/7. I think part of that is, is that the meaning for blessed or blessed has changed. So when you read the King James, you read the Beatitudes, it's blessed, right? And you read modern translations today, they usually choose the word blessed or blessed. Right? Whether you wanna have the apostrophe E over the E or not. Guess that's an accent mark, but whatever. And the Greek word means happy. Well, in 1611, King James English, happy and blessed are synonyms. Right? And so the Beatitudes are the, the Beatitudes are, are happy is the person who. Happy are you when? Right? Now, blessed is incorporated in that, but that's not the focus of it. And what I mean by that is, is, oh boy, I better go out and seek some persecution so I'm blessed. Right? No, it's just when it happens, be happy. Because, and, and again, we, we, we went to the Beatitudes, we, we looked at that when we were, when the disciples rejoiced for being basically persecuted in the name of Jesus. Right? Luke records that in, in Acts. So, the whole reason I bring this up is, is like I think this is, this is something to, right? There's no end to the depth of our sin. There's no end to the depth of our self-idolatry. So thanks be to God that the blood of Jesus Christ covers all of that. But yeah, I've seen some very weird commentatory on this passage, trying to square it with some sort of schema that's not there in the text, that's not there in scripture. Of trying to blame the church for lack of evangelical zeal or something. And it's like, these guys were in the temple every day. I mean, they were in Jerusalem every day preaching Christ Jesus. It's not like everybody in Jerusalem is 100% Christian. Otherwise, you would have no explanation for the persecution. But God, God uses this. And so he sends Philip to Samaria. Jerusalem, Samaria, ends there. "To proclaim to them the Christ, and the crowds with one accord paid attention to what was being said by Philip, when they heard him and saw the signs that he did. For unclean spirits crying out with a loud voice came out of many who had them, and many who were paralyzed or lame were healed. There was much joy in that city." So, so that people don't get confused that only Stephen has this superpower Holy Spirit of all the deacons. Now you have Philip, who has this superpower of the Holy Spirit. That the church is infusing, or infused with the Holy Spirit and great things are happening, and they are happening because of the proclamation of Jesus Christ. So the miracles, the cleansing of demons out of people is tied to the proclamation of Jesus Christ. And so, one of the things that Luke is basically screaming at us through without the, throughout this book is to proclaim Jesus Christ. Good things happen then. Not necessarily good things that you live a great life, but heaven on earth is in those moments. Salvation is in those moments. Christ crucified for the world is in those moments. And so the church has a job, and the church's job is always to proclaim Christ crucified. And the church should be very jealous about having anything encroach upon that. So the church doesn't take orders from other people. The church doesn't take orders from the government. Now, historically, that has not always been true. Alright? There have been, I mean, technically, whatever monarch is in charge in England is the head of the Church of England. Right? And, and so there's not always a separation of church and state as we understand it. But anything that interferes with the proclamation of Jesus Christ or says that you have to curtail it or somehow abridge it is verboten. As, as Luther puts it, in one of his writings, I'm gonna paraphrase him. He could talk about every single issue. Every single issue. But if he doesn't talk about the one issue that Satan is attacking the church on, it is pointless. So if somebody comes to us and says, basically, you can't talk about this stuff anymore. The church's answer is to talk about that stuff all the more. Now again, in America, we have the First Amendment. And as far as I'm aware, nobody has gone to jail for preaching Christ crucified. In other places in the world, that is not so, even in Western democracies. There are pastors in Canada that are in jail. There are Christians in England that are in jail. Some of them are just standing there. Not saying anything, not holding any signs, just literally standing on a public sidewalk. Which is just... I'm, I'm, I'm... It, it could very well, I, I'm just, I'm just saying, right, like we don't, we must obey God rather than men. And so, not only do they continue to preach Christ crucified in the temple and in Jerusalem, but now they're preaching it in other places. They're directly defying the authority of men. Now, in verse seven, "For unclean spirits crying out with a loud voice came out of many who had them, and many who were paralyzed or lame were healed. So there was much joy in that city." So he's doing the same mighty acts that the apostles were known for. We live in a society that discounts the supernatural by and large. Now, there is a growing trend towards paganism. So we'll see what happens 20 years from now. This might be the height of the secular age, I don't, I don't know. This is seen with our understanding of evil spirits as a culture. And we just had Halloween, okay? They had, everybody had all the scary movies, you know, you could watch them on TV or whatever. And one, there's, there's a couple of points to make here, and I, I wanna, I wanna emphasize this because this is the word for today as well. This is God's word, it's eternal. We, we live in a society that thinks that evil spirits is hocus pocus and not for developed societies. So you see that stuff, I'm gonna put that in quotes, when you go to places like Africa, or you go to places like South America. But here in America, we're too smart to believe in evil spirits.
We gave Lucifer his own TV show.
Yeah.
We did. We did. And that's the other thing that plays out when you don't believe in it as a, as a society. We have, we make media over it. And if you ever wanna see how out of touch those who decide what gets left in and left out of TVs and movies and things like that, right? Watch one of them that deals with any sort of spiritual stuff and how it lines up with actual Christian belief. I keep on going back to this, The Exorcist, right? The Exorcist is a great moment in time as, as a movie of, of, you know, the opening scene, these doctors are like, there's nothing wrong with your daughter, it's psychosomatic. So maybe an exorcism will clip whatever's in her brain and she'll stop this behavior. Right? And in The Exorcist, the original, was it '73 is when it came out? Okay. You really, for me, you know, I don't, I haven't seen every single movie or media or anything else like that. But I really think you see the tip of the iceberg of the power of Jesus Christ not being able to defeat Satan. Because do you know how, any, any of you guys seen the movie, you know how it ends? Okay, they're, they're performing the exorcism, they're having trouble exorcising this demon, and the young priest tells the demon to come into him, and then he jumps out of the window. Right? In effect, like, the exorcism is quote-unquote "successful" on the daughter, but the power of Jesus Christ is not powerful enough to expel the demon from the girl. Ever since then, you watch movies. And any time that deals with trying to take a spiritual biblical kind of worldview when it comes to dealing with Satan and the church is more and more powerless. And so not only do we live in a world that, that believes that, that demons is just hocus pocus, backwater, you guys are so dumb, you don't know anything, stuff. But we live in a world that just is completely out of touch with Christianity. And, and this is what gets fed people. Like, I don't watch horror movies in general, I don't like them, but the ones I do watch tend to be ones that deal with demon, demons, because I was like, this is so fake. It's so hilariously fake. I don't watch like zombies and things like that, that stuff freaks me out, I'm like, nope, heart attack. Right? But demon stuff, it's just like, it's laughing, it's like, oh, it's scary, whoa, whoa, they can't do anything. It's so fake! By the way, just on, the whole reason I watched The Exorcist, and I probably told you all guys this, is that family was LCMs. In, in St. Louis. So they wrote a book, and then the book became a movie. It was a boy. The family was last LCMs, and they kept on practicing the occult. They performed at least two successful exorcisms on the young boy. And then the family went back into practicing occulting stuff. So, I think the third or fourth time the family went to the Catholics. Because they basically wanted a permanent exorcism, but they kept on doing this stuff. And the Catholics sent them to Washington DC where, so, so in Roman Catholicism, they have priests praying, trained for exorcism. And it's a special school you go to in Rome, and it's, I don't know how long it takes, but you, you go through this thing. So they had one in, in Washington DC, so they sent them to Washington, they sent the family to Washington. And basically, the boy, I don't know about the parents, but the boy remains Roman Catholic. I think he's dead now. Right, remained Roman Catholic, faithful, staunchly Roman Catholic to the end of his life. But, yeah, it's, uh, it's interesting.
So you're saying they were LCMs and at the same time practicing the occult?
They were last LCMs, they were LCMs... They were last LCMS, they were LCMS, so that's why they kept on going to LCMS pastors.
Okay.
Yeah, but they were practicing the occult.
You would've thought the first time they got rid of it, they would've...
I'm curious, did the LCMS pastors...
Well, they kept on telling them, "Knock it off."
Yeah. Thank you.
I can't go into your house and stop you doing what you're gonna do.
You're not thinking this world, it's like, most people don't ever really sit and think that Satan really walks on this earth, he's still here. And it's like, for many Christians, that is kind of...
No, because, because, so, so again, this is why I think The Exorcist is a great reflection of the mindset. Right? The doctors are saying there's nothing medically wrong with the girl. It's all psychosomatic. Because in the medical community, as what is on paper, there is nothing spiritual. It is a materialistic worldview. Um, so they have no answer for what is wrong with her. If you go into any sort of mental institution today, there are people there that have schizophrenia. There are people there that have split personality disorder, I forget the technical name for it. There are people there that have bipolar disorder that has to be treated with so much drugs, are basically catatonic. And then there are people in there that are truly demonically oppressed or possessed. We put them, we put them out of sight today. And we blame it on mental disorders today.
This was presented one time, the devil, when Jesus died, went to hell, he put the devil on a chain, just like a pit bull.
Yeah, revelation, revelation, yeah.
And he, and until you go inside that circle of the pit bull, you can't get bit like that.
Yeah.
But if you invite him out or get cult or whatever, then it takes that chain off.
Yep. Yeah.
So, you know, you gotta be careful what you actions are doing.
Yes. Yeah. But again, like, as a culture, we just, I mean, there was, I think, kind of the last gasp of the Christian culture was the satanic panic of the eighties and nineties. The satanic panic. Alright, so Dungeons and Dragons is demonic. If you play Ozzy Osbourne's records backwards, there's prayers to Satan. There's a cult that is kidnapping children to sacrifice them to Satan. This, this, I mean, I got my fingers fingerprinted at one of the mall things because, I mean, this was like, this, I didn't know this stuff was going on. I came up as an adult, I learned about this like five years ago. I was like, "Oh, that explains like so much of my childhood."
To be fair to those people, not, not the Ozzy Osbourne records, not all of that stuff. And in terms of the children being kidnapped, that, that happened. Like, people are in prison for that, like, that's documented, it definitely was happening.
Yeah, but it wasn't as widespread as, as it...
Not like it was everywhere in the basements of churches or something.
That's how we ended up with the childcare workers who got put in jail for the satanic stuff they were doing with the kids. And it turns out that the questions that the social workers were asking were leading the kids on. And they get exonerated and released, but they lose five to 10 years of their life over an accusation that didn't actually happen.
So, yeah, it wasn't, it, yes, there were some isolated cases, but it wasn't like this, this global cabal, you know, kind of thing.
It's how it was presented.
What?
It's how it was presented in a lot of churches.
I mean, and there was, there was, there was news, I mean, like, I don't know if it was 60 Minutes or Dateline or whatever, I mean, there was, there was major news programs in the eighties and nineties covering this stuff. And not that this is false, but that this is happening, right? So I say that that was probably the last gasp as, as a Christian culture because, I mean... I, I think if, if we try to talk about Satan today, just the general public, I mean, we'd get so many eye rolls.
All they're gonna do is just turn on your TV if you want to see Satan in action. Come on, half the time most stuff out there is a joke.
Sorry, I couldn't hear your comment, Robin.
Well, that's what I was saying, it's like, most people, they just don't accept or believe that.
No, no, we live in a, we live in a, in a lot of ways, we live in a post-Christian culture that hasn't caught up to the implications of post-Christianity. We live in a materialistic culture. And I, when I say materialistic, I don't mean like you're trying to go out and just, you know, buy everything. I mean that only the material world exists, like the original definition of materialism. I think that there are people sounding the alarm bells for this. Ironically enough, one of the biggest ones is Richard Dawkins, who 20 years ago when I was in college was promoting that we need to recognize that we are, that we are a materialistic society and embrace it. Because he's, he's an atheist, he's a Darwinist. And now when he is living in the, uh, you know, just in 20 years from that and he's seeing what's happening, he's going, "Wait, we need a nominally Christian society." The, the, the Western, Western culture as we understand it needs at the bare minimum a nominally Christian society.
Yeah, we need universally preferable behavior and it looked suspiciously like those things that 20 years ago he was saying.
Yeah, so, so cultural Christianity is what they're calling, and so he will call himself a cultural Christian. I, I believe that, uh, does Jordan Peterson call himself a cultural Christian? If not, he's really, really close to. Um, and it, and really what it is, is that they want the morals and ethics of Christianity without the belief in the going to church and all that. All, they don't want the spiritual stuff, but they want the, they want commandments four through 10. One through three they can care less about. But if you get rid of one through three, you don't get four through 10.
They also don't want the one about not committing adultery.
Well, here's the thing, um, it's, it's wrong to cheat on your wife. Right? And they'll say that, right, it's wrong to cheat on your wife. But the punishment, the culture punishment should just be divorce.
Or polyamory.
Yeah. Okay, um, so... We, we can approach the Bible in this way of, "Well, this was back then and there was just evil spirits everywhere, everywhere back then." Right? Forgetting that the Bible records the highlights. It doesn't record every single moment of every single day. And so this is the extraordinary thing, the casting out of demons. This is the extraordinary thing of healing, um, the lame and the sick and things like that. But we live in a world where there are demons, there are unclean spirits, evil spirits, whatever you want to, uh, whatever you want to call them. Um, and we live in a world where there is miraculous healing that we cannot explain. Now, we also live in a world where healing is usually done through medicine and doctors and time and rest and chicken broth and those kind of things as well. But there are, there are people that, you know, they go in for a scan and cancer's all gone and the doctors can't explain it. It happens.
Well, in Exorcists, they're still real things, they're still being trained.
They still are real things?
You can listen to podcasts from them, you can read their books they're writing about it.
Those are not pleasant experiences, I cannot stress that enough.
There's one who does podcasts and he actually says, "I met the devil twice, face-to-face with the devil, not in a person, face-to-face, he came up to me and talked to me."
I want that podcast.
The Exorcist File.
Oh, okay, I've had somebody else write that, okay.
Hi, just a little bit of an aside, where, where we just, we just moved here from New Mexico and the part of New Mexico, we moved from a very, very heavily Catholic. But I also ran into people every time I would go to the grocery store in line that were actually devil worshippers.
Yeah.
They wore tattoos, they wore t-shirts proclaiming the devil.
Yeah. So there's, there's...
Pretty sad.
So in, in the religious makeup of America, as... In, I mean, there's so many things that play into this. Younger generations rejecting older generations and their mores and their values and things like that. I mean, in the same way that there's Woodstock back in the seventies, there's, you know, each generation does that. And so, there is, and there has been kind of this, this rejection of... So if I'm going to reject my parents' mores, well, then I'm gonna reject their faith. Right? And for those who want to be antagonistic to their parents, not just reject their faith, I'm gonna, you know, because I don't actually believe in all the spiritual stuff, I'm gonna, you know, practice, I'm gonna be culturally wiccan if you will, right? Not wicked, wiccan, W-I-C-C-A-N. Uh, and there's kind of the new AG movement tied into that, you got the Crystals and all that BS, you know, going on. But then you also have people who, um, out of that group, you have two people either out of them or adjacent to them, however you want to define it, you have those who are quote-unquote Satan worshippers, like the Church of Satan, where they don't actually believe Satan exists. They name themselves just because they're anti-Christian.
Right, it's more a political thing.
It's a political thing, it's a throw-it-in-your-face kind of thing and, and it's, it's about, um, being resilient and strong and yada, yada, yada. They don't actually go to anything considered like a church service or anything less like that. It, it's just, it is a rejection of Christianity in a, um, you know how we said there's a time and place to be a jerk? They are just jerks all the time. And then, right alongside of them, are people who actually worship Satan. They believe in him, um, and they worship him. And they all buy the same merchandise. Right? You, you have a cross on, right? Well, there's Catholics that wear that cross, there's Baptists that wear that cross, there's Pentecostals that wear that cross, right? We all buy the same merchandise. Well, they all buy the same merchandise, not realizing that the spheres and stuff that they are inhabiting. And, and so, yeah, it gets, it gets weird. And then also in New Mexico, so you have a lot of Catholics, you have a lot of Native Americans because of how, um, like boarding schools and things worked. Well, before we were alive, um, there was a lot of Native Americans that rejected Christianity because of what their people experienced by, by people. Now, I should also just caution, there's been a lot of claims made about those boarding schools that have turned out to be false, like all this stuff in Canada, they haven't had a single body of all these people that were supposedly dying by the boarding schools and things like that. Uh, so there's a lot of lies, there's a lot of misinformation. So you, so you have that in New Mexico and then New Mexico's also heavily influenced, New Mexico and Arizona by the New Age movement, where you have the Crystals and all that. And so you have kind of this perfect storm in New Mexico because, by the way, our imagery, Christian imagery gets co-opted by other religions all the time. Voodoo, voodoo, co-ops Christian imagery all the time in our words and our language all the time. Um, and so you kind of have that same mix happening in that part of the world as well. And so you got these idiots and you don't know like, okay, you have a tattoo on there, you have a shirt on there, which of these groups are you in? Are you just, are you, are you an idiot idiot or are you a really idiot idiot?
So once a year, there's a Jim Stone and Rock event that happens down here at the Fairgrounds.
Yeah.
I took my boys down there a couple of years ago because they were into rocks and fossils and stuff and we had a good look around. And I explained to them on the way in that there are people in here that are shopping for rocks because they're nerds and because they're cool. There's people in here that are shopping for rocks because they have magical powers. And you need to understand that when you walk into a booth, you need to look around, see how things are being presented and when somebody offers you a stromatolite, a super old rock, and then they're explaining to you that keeping this rock on your person will help you do this, it'll help you feel that, it'll help you do this. That doesn't make the stromatolite less cool, it just makes it not a good source of information whenever they're telling you about the thing.
Yeah.
And those people were running rampant in that place. They're hard to find at all, they live in our neighborhoods, they're among us.
Yeah, no, and, and that's, so, I believe that is actually a traveling expo. Um, they used to have one in Topeka, Kansas.
It's people from all over the country that follow that expo around, yes.
Yeah, yeah, and they, and they would advertise, you know, tarot readings, palm readings, you know, all, all that kind of stuff. I never, I never went, I always wanted to, to dress up in my collar and attend one of the times, but I wasn't gonna pay 15 bucks for a ticket.
It's a fantastic opportunity for people watching, if nothing else.
Yeah.
Yeah, you throw a little kid into the mix though and, you know... There's people inside churches, like there are Christians...
Yes.
That do the rock things, like putting ambers on their babies and stuff.
Yes.
I have a coworker, and she, she's a trained psychologist and she believes that any effect that you get from prayer is placebo, but she doesn't just think that about Christians, she thinks that about all religions. But at the same time, she carries around a pocket of rocks. I know this because she has shown them to me and told me what they do.
Effective placebo effect.
So, and the thing about it is, is that, okay, so, so misinformation is powerful, propaganda's powerful, right? Like, when our babies were teething, I don't know, we had people with medical degrees and they're like, "Hey, listen, people swear by those amber necklaces and it helps with teething or whatever." Now, we never did them because there's like choking hazard and all that, not choking hazard, but strangulation hazard and all that. But like, there's so much false information out there. And when it comes to kids, parents are emotionally vulnerable. I mean, we, don't, don't laugh this off, I mean, my goodness. I don't know what your opinion is on this, but JFK Junior, is that his name? RFK Junior just had to publicly admit that there's no tie to Tylenol and autism. He did that about 10 days ago.
Probably about 20 minutes after receiving the lawsuit they were.
I don't know, but the current AG of Texas is suing Tylenol. So, again, misinformation is powerful. And if you can create a narrative in social media, I mean, this, this happens and...
Seems a lot of the info we get is misinformation.
Well, I'm gonna tie this back to less controversial topics because I don't want to make anybody mad here. And I don't want to, you know, I, we need to stay in our lane as church, I want to stay in my lane as pastor, so to speak. I'm a firm believer in children not having social media. And there's a variety of reasons for that, there's a whole bunch of Six Commandment stuff that they get bullied into, there's all sorts of stuff like that. But if you go on, go on the social medias that children are on, which is primarily Instagram right now, there's Snapchat, you don't get on Snapchat because you won't be in any of their groups, okay, you have to get invited to the groups. But if you go on Instagram and you start looking under spirituality stuff, and this is what is being fed to your kids by an algorithm. The craziest stuff. When I was in high school, I was taught, we, we had courses every English class on evaluating sources and the information that they present. We had to learn how to do that. Because the big boogeyman in the room was Wikipedia. And anybody can change Wikipedia, but the World Almanac, that was the gospel, right? And so you go down to the library and you'd find it in a printed source. They do not teach media literacy anymore.
When I was in college, you had to take it, it was a part of your prerequisites.
Now, they, they might try to incorporate it, but to my understanding, it is nowhere near like it was. And so, I say this to say, they are presented with information and all the information that they are presented with is presented as equal. Which is already bad enough. But now you have a flood of AI videos. So one that was shared to me this week was supposedly this demon-possessed man trying to steal the sacrament of the altar in a Roman Catholic church off the altar and being thrown back and sliding back, right? It's AI.
Yeah.
But it was presented as, "This is the power of the one true Catholic church." Right? Somebody who was an adult shared that to me and didn't realize it's an AI video. Right? Now, it also got shared to me by somebody in the video of the cat shooting the shotgun. Cats can't pick up shotguns, guys. Cats can't pick up shotguns, guys, I don't know what to tell you. That's AI as well, the kid shooting the deer with his little, uh, dart gun, that's AI as well, like, they're really, really good now. But it's all presented as equal information. Um, and unless you teach your kids or your grandkids media literacy, they, I mean, one, I just recommend, don't let them have social media until they are much older, there's, there's all sorts of mental health problems that go, correlate with it. Uh, we don't know the causation, but there's a really strong correlation. Um, but just the, the, the media literacy of being able to look at something and go, that's fake, or that's not real, or that's false information. Um, which also means that your kids and grandkids, you gotta be catechizing them really well. You can't just trust what happens here when they're in middle school, but you gotta keep that up, and you gotta have these conversations with them. You have to have spiritual conversations with your children. My kids have finally seen K-pop Demon Hunters, because all their friends saw it, all their younger friends saw it. I watched it beforehand, but we had an honest-to-God conversation about demons, how Christ is more powerful, and how this was fiction and not real, and you can ignore everything that happens in it, it's a good story, but it's not based on truth. And we had that conversation for two weeks before we let them watch that movie. We still thought it was gonna be too scary for them, this is streaming, I don't wanna out them, but they had some rough nights sleeping after they watched the movie, okay? Um, it's, so, so...
But it's also based on a non-Christian conception of demons.
But, but, yes, it is.
That's part of, of, part of what, what you're saying, part of that conversation is also, this is using same words to mean different things, and you've gotta be aware of that.
Yes, and so having these, having conversations about spiritual stuff with your kids and your grandkids is more, it's not, doesn't need to be every single conversation with, with them, but it needs to happen.
The biggest social media for kids these days is Roblox. I think the statistic currently...
Get off of Roblox.
Yes.
Get off of Roblox.
Half of all American children under the age of sixteen are on Roblox, there are horrifying things happening there. And because of lawsuits, we now know that the company is actively, actively pursuing the thing that makes them money instead of the thing that protects the people using their platform.
So I will say this, this, this will be what I will say as your pastor, if you have kids or grandkids on Roblox, it's,
What's it called?
Roblox, R-O-B-L-O-X.
Wait, the, the company's being sued for doing the thing that makes them money?
Yes, the company is being sued for doing things that make them money.
So, so I won't, like, so, so what it is, is that, um, you, you guys know like the To Catch a Predator show? Right, the premise of it, they would lure pedophiles in and they're exposed to the water? So this guy basically does that on Roblox, and he was turning in child predators to the police. And, um, somebody like basically wrote a story on it, and Roblox banned his account. Cause the people giving money to Roblox, by and large, are child sexual predators. And they are protecting those customers. So they're getting sued over it, and they're not the only company. So my PSA to you is, do not let your kids be on Roblox, for the love of everything holy, close their accounts, because even the safe games, even the games that are supposed to have age-appropriate filters, not supposed to allow child predators in, because they're not supposed to allow adults in. Don't. Those people are gonna have a very interesting meeting with Jesus someday. Um, but they are, that is like the most evil company in my mind, for what they are doing and what they are allowing to happen.
Who they're protecting, so to say.
Yeah.
And they have the power to do things that they shouldn't be doing, they have the power to do it right, and they're actively not doing those things.
Plus, also, um, your kid could spend five thousand dollars on there without you knowing, and they won't reimburse you. They're being sued for that as well, along with a lot of other companies.
I mean, it's a company, people are voluntarily getting on there, people are letting their children on there. So as much as we can like be angry at the company, like, the federal government does those same things, and we don't have a say, you don't get to choose whether you participate. Roblox, that's a company, like, don't get on there, don't let your kids on online games, like, what are you doing? Like, be mad at them, but it's on you, you and your kids, not on them.
So many parents just get their kids on the media and don't even know what they're doing there.
I'll, I'll be, we gotta like, we gotta wrap up, we gotta, we gotta finish, but just one other PSA, is that if a game allows children to play, but has a chat feature of any sort, so I don't care if it's on a platform or on a computer, I don't care if it's Call of Duty, or if it's Roblox, you know, whatever it is, don't do it. Do, do not do it. Cause it's not just that stuff, I mean, you should hear the language some of them say to one another.
There, there's so many good games that do not require online connections at all. On PC, on every single platform, there are so many good games, and for kids, that don't require...